All right, thanks everybody for waiting. We're going to call the meeting to order again. No, no, we're not. We are going to call a new meeting at the Committee of the Whole to order. We are going to forego the Pledge of Allegiance, but we are going to call the roll again. Mr. Scott?
We all know that Mrs. Olbray is not here. Uh, Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Struble?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Okay. Procedures for public participation, I read through them the last time. Committee of the Whole's different than a voting meeting. There will be a section for people to make comments on every subsection that we have coming up. We have one for finance, one for programs, et cetera. So there, I will call for public comment on those items throughout the meeting. And then there will be a time at the end you can make comments on any, any items, not, not, you know, not just ones before the board in this, in this agenda. So, we have some announcements. I do not think we have any agenda edits to the Committee of the Whole. We did have, we will have an executive session following this meeting to discuss personnel. As you know, we had an executive session at the beginning of the special voting meeting to discuss negotiations. We also had an executive session following the budget workshop on May 4th to discuss negotiations. And now we are ready for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam President. The last week was National Feature Appreciation Week. And as we celebrated that last week, one of the things I did was nominate and deliver it in person to all of our professional staff members, the shining stars pins, in recognition of that week for the work they did with their students throughout the course of this school year, to recognize that week. This year was such a different year, and, you know, they did such a remarkable job, so decided to award them all with our shining star pin. Mitigation orders, less masking requirements until the Commonwealth rates a 70% immunization. And that was the, the government just released that information last week. Along, it's to be lifted effective May 31st. We'll be on break that time. School will not be in session until 6:01. So as we return from Memorial Day weekend, district administration will be presenting a motion to the board on the 24th voting meeting agenda to rescind the district's health and safety plans, both the district and the athletics one. As a result of that, lifting of those mitigation standards, obviously less than masking mandate. Due to that, lifting of that in a timely fashion, our seniors are scheduled to graduate on June 4th. And with that, because of not having the requirements on gatherings as far as percentage of the facility, our graduates will now receive four tickets for the commencement exercise in 2021, with the possibility of a fifth, pending, again, obviously that's board approval of our administration's recommendation to rescind those health and safety plans. We have many events happening at the end of the year in each of our four buildings. As the year comes to the close, such items as bridge stage, where our kids who are transitioning from building to building make trips up to the building that they will be going to in the subsequent school year. And outdoor concerts, award ceremonies, et cetera. So looking forward to attending those in the next few weeks. And the last thing I'd like to report is our high school. It's ranking in the best high schools in the U.S. News and World Report. Comes out about this time every year. Has risen slightly. And apparently the high schools in the top 20% of high schools in that report in the nation, top 23% of high schools in the state, and top third in our county, coming in at six of 18 of public high schools. So that was a slight rise in previous years. The data is pulled on a two-year-old, so it was from the 18, 19 school year is when that data's pulled, takes two years to be collated and put together. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. One thing I just wanted to brag about, so, for, on Saturday morning, I don't know if anybody saw, but Danny Boone was on the front page of the Reading Eagle. Because of our Unified Track Meet, we were holding the first one. It was, and, and if anybody was watching 69 News on Friday night, you might have seen that absent board member Mrs. Olbray, her daughter was interviewed by, by WFMZ because she is the first student to graduate from RAC with a dual, with, with our, through our dual enrollment program. She's our first student that will be graduating the end of the school year with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And one of our kids, his name I can't remember, did really good at a track meet with me in Javelin, but I can't remember.
I can't.
Thank you. So, so our kids had a good, had a good, good weekend. Okay, so moving on to finance. A lot of this is end, the typical end of year stuff. I know Mrs. Bell has a comment on something under finance.
I am seven. I will have to abstain from voting because Eastern Alliance is my employer.
Okay. Beyond that, any, any comments, questions, concerns from the board on anything under finance? Okay, any public comment? Okay, I know it's a lot, so I see some people reading it, so I'm just, I'm just waiting. Okay, moving on to programs, there's just one thing. We've, we've talked about the, in the last couple of years. Do you remember how long ago that position was phased out?
I'm going to say it was back around 2010. Mr. Early, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but it was somewhere around that time.
Social worker position was phased out the first time?
Probably about over 10 years ago.
Okay, so we used to have a social worker position in the school. Not just, not just COVID, but other situations have, you know, made it apparent that it was, it's a position if we could make it happen, would be worthwhile for the district to bring back. So this, this is the proposed job description we'll be voting on next time. Any questions, concerns from the board about the proposal or the job description language? Any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to something else. Personnel. Got some retirements, leave and resignations, leads, and appointments. Under appointments, it's been a long time since we've had a school psychologist at the primary center. But we're going to, we do, we're going to have one now, so that, that's exciting for us. Any comments, questions from the board for the administration for anything under personnel? Any public comments? Okay, moving on to presentations by the board members. Secretary's correspondent, Mr. Scott. I hear that we had a couple of emails.
Yeah, we, we definitely had several emails. I, I think you're, you got the better number, but I think we're over 120 emails regarding the eight situation which we just voted on, so.
And we did, I did just receive a copy of a petition, you know, so.
Right, with a petition, and then, yeah, but I mean, going, and then we also, you know, we received easily a hundred of the same identical email, but at least 20-some individual, very personal emails to all of us.
Okay.
Again, we heard it.
Okay. Moving on to the BCIU report, Mr. Miller.
Yes, from the meeting on April 15th, it was fairly procedural. The only real new thing is the new representative from the Nulandburg School District was appointed, Tony Lupa. There was one other email that came out to the board for the BCIU. They received notification from Burks County Office that they're terminating their alternative education services for the residents at the Burks County Residential Center effective June 27th.
Okay.
That could have some impact to their.
Okay.
The big iteration out of BCIU.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Miller on that? Okay, moving on to the BCTC Board, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, we met on April 28th. Big news the night of the higher director Stover, he's the director of the record, placing Dr. Correct at his time. And the next meeting was May 11th.
He, he had been there a really long time, hadn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, any, any questions for Ms. Thompson? Student Government Report? Are you?
She's not here.
Yeah, she's a, okay. No, it's, I, I want, I want to hear it, but it's long, so.
Do you want me to like, do you want to ask you that?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah. Okay, so this is being spoken as in the past year, so I would just like to make that clear.
Okay.
So, we have always faced with multiple obstacles every year, even no matter what. This year particularly challenges itself in every aspect of the game, and that I feel like, before we always had the basic school guidelines, you know, it's all. Now we have a regulation of the pandemic guidelines to ensure everyone's habits of play in uncertain situations, and now that was a blowback. The students have a major difficulty occasionally with all we have in hand of these past years. I want to share with you all our new things, regulations, things we're able to do, even though it's hard. Now, our programming has always been one of the most involved programs in the district. We have very well-oversighted programming of athletes who've always been the best performers and athletes to whatever they've taken. We have a few athletes that highlighted the past winter season that you may have been out there now. Chris Julianne, who holds both plates for Debbie's and Apple's district and states by 1200 weight class. He also put green baby district records for 15 of 1200 weight. Chris is currently training for his Olympic trials. We also had Alex Holden, who took home the gold, began to see a gold in states. Central Women's Basketball, where one of our old Jennifer Heathcliff, who nominated for the 3-point Gold Award. This nomination qualifies Jennifer for the June 5 scholarship for outstanding athletic performance in Debbie basketball. So far this spring, all of us go to a good place and be the full player in the fall pool the entire season. We are able to introduce a new program that was brought to us through Ms. Chase Talison. Many students can find those girls and smile on their face. This makes the start of the day that much better by being able to see on the wall. So when this video of Miss Talison plays together, it's no wonder there's been some delay. Miss Talison has brought many people on very old Unified Track, traded very hard with this many people on outside. The two of them together have an impact on a lot of the students they've been able to see. They have been able to walk with and see the world every day. So it actually changes the big needs each day, including represent Debbie with each. Then she goes on to highlight a couple of teachers who have gone on to help with COVID. On top of that, we've had six seniors play, sign to play collegiate level sports. That includes Ashley Van Neen at Shondell University for cross-country and track field. Nicole Ball, at Clare University for women's soccer. Hannah Passner at Lockman University for softball. Maybe you are those at Tindale University for baseball. Chris Julianne of Cleveland University for serving in the hands of Stanford University for softball. There's going to be a second signing day for athletes going to the National Signing Days. On top of that, Minnesota guys could, um, together assist them there. There are great people involved in the virtual students who can celebrate their college and trade accomplishments. Those people are the cause for class 2020 to organize. And to wrap up, she would like to thank everyone who has put in the time and effort to make this year a success.
Thank you for doing that for us, Mrs. Sweet. Now, we are waiting here from Mr. Sweet and Ms. Garrett, Ms. Sweet and Mr. Garrett here again.
So I'll be reading the, I'll be reading the High School and Middle School Report. We have a few events that are coming up. Most of them are already mentioned, but we have prom the 14th of this month. Musical, which already took place, with Woods on Charlie Brown. We have the Phantom Chorus Concert coming up. And we have Bridge Day coming up, which is the second. AP exams are rolling on right now, and they'll be lasting through the 17th. And this is the in-person version of AP exams. Students still have the option to take the online version. The mental health section in the library, members of FBLA create posters and organize materials to make the section more inviting to the students. It's a new initiative that the library is taking up to make a mental health section. On the sports, for Unified Track, they held their first COLE meet against Pop Road, and they did very, look very well. Boys tennis, they sure had a very good record, finishing with 12 and 4, one of the best seasons that they've ever had with the boys and girls teams. And for the seniors, there's a couple of different events that have been so far, such as the Trumpet Treat, which is a kind of similar to Trumpet Treat, but with cars. Just kind of make a special event for the seniors. There is the decision date, that some of our seniors had an opportunity to celebrate their decision after graduation. And this could be going to the military, going to college, or whatever other important state, side venture. The senior awards scholarship night is May 27th. Congratulations will take place June 4th in the stadium. This is the middle school report. We'll tell you, actually, events coming up. And coming first, it is the day, there will be social events taking place outside and celebrating the end of the year. Good job that they did this year with all the new mandates. June 2nd is their Bridge Day. It'll be, the rising guard career will get a chance to go to high school and meet some of the staff. Middle schoolers are enjoying the two separate lunchrooms currently being utilized to socialize since it's once lunch, gives them a more, better opportunity to sit right now. However, they do not like that any one of the lunchrooms act as if they're, they're classes instead of friends, so they're very limited on where they can sit. And they feel that this is kind of bad because they don't have very many other opportunities to socialize throughout the day, and lunch was a big, big thing for them. And they also feel that lunch is a little short considering the new guidelines taking more time to get students through the lunch line, affecting their eating distance the whole time. Kind of things to their time. Use of iPads in class have been very effective. Those teachers that we've talked to or met students say that iPads are a great step to them, and it's starting to take to a great help. There are a few complaints about headaches, concerns about scaring students all day. There's a couple of suggestions about maybe purchasing light screen detectors or filters and making a camera on the eye strain of your students. Overall, the students are just who loves to go to the open person. Thank you.
So now, we're into the intermedia center. As the school year winds down, the students hopefully go into the last few weeks of school and the events that come with that. At the end of the year, there's celebrations for all the students, and the fifth year has a chance to go to the middle school and toe. And it's called Bridge Day, and it's held on April 18th. For the last day of school, the students are hoping to go on leave day, which is the annual tradition. The students of schools that kids stayed last week and are most of them are excited about the total of some available structure and are surprised and happy about the estate. The pleasure is still of that, having all the teachers online, a little bit more engaging, like chemistry, sharing bowls, and in which throwing equipment will be classed. The iPad technology has been a huge hit, and the students are using the mobile for most classes. Overall, students can understand how to use that and are enjoying that. For the students to talk to us, show that there are still two math groups out there. They want to thank all the teachers for how good they are and how helpful they have been throughout this year. Their only complaint was low consistency with staying with cats. They don't help, have to use seats, are being issued rights, and students have to sit for the evening. At the marquee seat, as always, there are a lot of new and exciting activities going on. Just last week, the students of their model party, the students of this fair and the cars program, even the DPL students got home, sat on the levels for a whole time at the week at home. Sometime in the next week, they'll be officially the second day of the year, and they'll go away and meet the state council through the school building. Along the same time, there'll be a kindergarten run for the upcoming kindergarten to learn how to use the path properly, and they'll be teenagers. This year, the college program will also receive a gesture back from the school supply because of the math skills they're coming that they want. This program is called Building Really Lovely. There are some good things to uphold for the schools, the programs are officially open once again, the festival down. On top of that, the head historian is to tend to, and he's a vote bank. The teacher pays $600 for the kids' new signs to bring out building that. In that particular week, there'll be a lot of ending of tests. It's the week that ended the big thing for the partners. One of the programs we want to highlight at the current school is the advanced mobile phone club, where student teachers are able to use some chat devices and discuss that. Finally, I'd personally like to say that at the end of the poll, say thank you, everything opposed numbers. This is my last meeting as the school board rep after two years. Although this position has existed long before I joined, it will last long after me. I am so thankful to be a small part of this program. Thank you to everyone's votes has helped me grow as closer, there's going to be so many great opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Spohles, for giving me this chance. Thank you to Mrs. Obway and Mr. Shovell, putting people in the gold back to always go to and look at. I am so thankful of experience, and I'm so excited to want to meet step up and be seen about my business.
Thank you, Spohles. I look forward to seeing you next year, right? All right, moving on to the legislative report, Mr. Struble?
Yes, we had a COLE meeting on April 13th, and kind of boil a lot of conversation down to a short period of time. The efforts to change the cyber schools, how they're compensated, was really the main step what we talked about.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of other things covered, but that was the main point.
Do we have any other reports? Any public comment on any of the board reports? Enrollment statistics are listed next. Data review. Any comments, concerns for administration from the board? Any public comment? Our head count, our head count statistics this year are obviously pretty, pretty anomalous. You know, they don't, they don't really show the trends. It's just, you know, it's COVID year, it's going to be a whip, I hope. So, curriculum and instruction committee report. Did we need personal? I didn't think so. So, Mrs. Olbray isn't here, but Mr. McKnight is. There will be a meeting in, on 24th, there will be a meeting May 24th, but there wasn't one in April. Any public comment on, on the, on the meeting that didn't happen? So, extracurricular reports? Oh, we didn't do that either.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Okay, and now will, will there, will there be a meeting Tuesday? I guess maybe we'll, we'll time it off.
Yeah, there should.
Yeah, okay.
I'll follow you on that.
That's right. Any public comments on the date of next, the next meeting we didn't meet this past, like, like two hours ago? Facilities and transportation, that we did do, Mr. Struble?
Yeah, that this evening, yes.
Yes.
Steve gave basically a report, an overview of a lot of the things that were going on as far as SDC, SDC is concerned. Talked about different items and how they were doing. And he has a plan he presented to us for the summer, and we'll, this won't go over all the details there. He mentioned, you know, something about the ADC wall being done. There's engineers working on it. A whole list of things that they're going to be doing this summer, which I'm not going to review. All done now. In terms of the transportation, they're getting, by June 30th, they're hoping to have the, turning the routing over to the bus companies by then, so it's a smoother transition this year. With all the information that's being provided already, there's been early signups. Diane Litter's been helping him, he feels that it's been a real big help for him. And last but not least, they're trying to set up a share of information so we can go reduce our paper impact on the transportation company so that it makes the decision for all those things. And the infinite camp is kind of, some of this routing software, it's pretty neat stuff.
Yeah, one thing that, and you can correct me if I'm overstating this. The summer work, there's always work that we do every summer. Because of last summer, A, the summer work, the priority was things that needed to be done so that we could come back to school safely under the time of coronavirus. And also, there were certain types of work that could not be done because of limitations on how many people could be together. We were still at that point where if work was being done inside, you know, we might not have been able to do it because of having too many people in a workspace together and six feet of distance. So, it's not quite twice as much summer work as we, we normally have, but it's a, it's a lot, so.
Mostly maintenance, and then next meeting's June 7th.
Right. Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Struble from the board? Any public comments? Finance. Mr. Miller?
Yes, we, we didn't have a committee meeting, but we did have workshops. We had the May 4th workshop where we came up with the budget proposal, the proposed budget. We actually agreed to, as we said earlier, we'd move forward with standard practice of just submitting a proposed budget with the tax increase to the index of Act 1, but fully intend to review that over the next month and seeing where we will come out. So we'll continue to take a look at the budget and see what the actual final proposal will be that's in June, but we did not have a meeting in May.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Miller? Any questions from, any public comments on finance or budget workshop? Moving on to policy, Mr. Scott?
So we had our, we had a very quick meeting this evening right before our special voting meeting. We discussed two policies, video surveillance. And we, I mean, we had the first reading of video surveillance and reporting illegal conduct and whistleblowing. Pretty straightforward. Our next meeting is on June 7th. That's all I have.
Okay, and then there's a handful of things that are up for second reading that will be voted on at the next meeting. And if voted on, it will be approved, it will be adopted. Any questions for Mr. Scott from the board about the record-breaking, four and a half minute long policy meeting we had earlier today?
Newest four minutes.
Any, any comments, any public comments on policy? Technology, Mr. Struble?
Yeah, we met on April 26th. There was a conversation about replacing some servers that are much needed. They did launch the online registration for kindergarten only. Was hoping to offer paper 12, and this is April 26th, it's probably hour already, so. It was this week, my, my notes. Mobile is what they're having, it's a quality book. The internet service provider's going well. It's ahead of schedule. Crowncastor is looking for July cut over. So, and PDT's going to be right behind them, so we'll have a whole new infrastructure with dynamic power, redundant backup, so. It's going really well, I'm very pleased with that.
And this is the internet provider to replace the one where we used to get it through the DCIU?
Correct, yeah. And then there's only two providers, so we have that redundancy. Crowncast or PDT. Frontline recruit hire implementation replaces TownEd. It's going to really help that whole entire process, job posting first and performance second. They're following that. And then digital learning, they're moving forward with Blackboard and integrates with in, in campus. He's really excited about that. And they're connecting Zoom and discovery and some other items. And from a training perspective, while their training's ongoing, and has been doing very well. Real pleased with the usage and the level of usage, what we currently have, we're ahead. Next meeting is on five twenty four.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Sherwood on technology from the board? Any public comment on the technology committee report? Okay. We're on the home stretch. Moving on to old business, the minutes are there. Any comments, questions, concerns on the minutes from April twenty sixth? Any public comment? New business. Yes, so most, the president, vice president are appointed on every December. But the board secretary, board treasurer, they're on a fiscal year, fiscal year cycle. And they are up for re, well, election or an appointment. The school board secretary is currently Mr. Scott. And he has told me he is interested in staying in that position. If anybody else is interested in presenting their hat, let me know. Right now, our school board treasurer is the electorate's Mr. Sherwood. If anybody else is interested in that, let me know. And I think we're going to have a pie eating contest to decide who gets a job. We're going to have a pie eating contest to decide who gets a job.
Yeah.
If anybody else is presenting in the running, we'll vote on that next meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board on new business? Any public comment? Okay, and now is the time for public comment on any, any items, agenda or otherwise.
Hello, my name is Tim Price. I live at forty-four Wall Street in Douglasville.
I, we've got the mic up as far as it can go.
All right.
If, if you would like, you can take off your mask and just wipe the mic down when you're done. If you feel like it'll help you speed a little louder, you know?
That's good.
Okay.
As a one-on-one aide in the special education department within the Daniel Boone School District, my colleagues and I pour our hearts and souls into the well-being of our students each and every day. We work hand in hand with the teachers and staff to ensure that the students get the highest quality of education, to help prepare them to live as independently as possible and be upstanding citizens after they graduate. We will not find a more talented and dedicated group of individuals. It's disheartening to learn that the administrators and school board members are considering outsourcing our jobs. I realize that you may save money by doing so, but what are you going to do in exchange for a discount? You may assume that the majority of the aides will be made under the new management, which you can't assume. There are some who need healthcare. There are some who are already living on shoestring and can't afford less income. There are some who will refuse to wait around for the district to realize they made a mistake because we believe it would be exactly that, a mistake. Outsourcing is not the norm, it's the exception. We will lose highly qualified and capable employees, employees like myself, who live within and are part of the Daniel Boone community. These students aren't just seen at schools. These students are our neighbors, our friends' children, and perhaps even our own children. Who will replace us? That's a good question. Will they be as dedicated, as hardworking? We haven't invested in these children. Will they? You may think there's a wealth of people eager to step in and fill our shoes, but it's unlikely. And we can't even find substitutes when we take a day off of work. Thus leaving our fellow aides and students and teachers scrambling to fill the void. For a long time in our nation's history, students like ours were hidden away from society, from the rest of the mainstream students. The mindset was that they couldn't learn, couldn't be educated, and couldn't be productive members of society. Fortunately, that philosophy has changed, and they are being integrated into mainstream classrooms and into mainstream society. They are taught life skills and educated to hold jobs and to prosper in our communities. I, along with so many others, believe our students deserve the best, and I hope you do too. Education is no place to look for a discount. I encourage you to vote no to outsourcing the aides of this school district. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry to make you that as well, but you know, I felt like it was the best way to go. And there is a traffic jam in the back of, the back of the room. Won't be too much longer.
Hi, my name is Laura Callender. Some background about myself, I am a mom of Jack Callender. Jack has Down syndrome. He has been in the district since kindergarten. My husband and I have worked very hard with his I E P team throughout the years to help him be successful. I can say one of the most critical parts of his team is the aide. I depend on every detail the aide has to help Jack be successful. They are the eyes and ears on the front lines. I have seen the sub aides from Precision H R, and I'm not impressed. In fact, I'm a little palled. The questions I have are, how is the new service going to know the child's need? How are they going to be informed of I E P information? Will they be informed of S D I information, which is specifically designed instruction? Will they keep our students' information confidential? Will the parent have a say or take part in the decision of who will be with their child? Will they have background checks and who monitors that information? The new company or the district? I am also an employee. I am also a special education aide in the emotional support room at the intermediate center. I have been with the district since two thousand eight. I have worked in every building. I have worked in every kind of special needs class. I have also been a bus aide. I take pride in knowing my student. I work hard to ensure their safety, to ensure their I E P is being followed. I do all the professional development that is suggested by the district. I stay up nights researching some of their conditions without being asked to do so. I spend my own money getting them things they need, like snacks or sensory items to help them focus. I care deeply, very deeply about how they will succeed in life and our community. My questions as an employee. I will, how will you ensure the kind of care with outsourcing? How will you ensure that dedication with outsourcing? How will you ensure our students' safety with outsourcing? What about all the years we've been with the district? Does that mean nothing? What about our lives you are disrupting just as much as the students that we care for? I am also very involved in the community. I am the buddy ball, the baseball director for the Daniel Boone Athletic Association. I see all of our great athletes in school, and I also have the privilege of coaching them in baseball. It is an honor to be involved with these athletes and their parents. Many of our aides and teachers have been involved in buddy ball. They have dedicated countless hours believing in their potential. My questions for that, will this outsourcing have employees like this part of our community? Will this company be dedicated to our most precious students? Our Daniel Boone community is the best around. We would, why would you want to disrupt that community? We have a community that will come together inside and outside of the school environment to ensure our most vulnerable kids are taken care of. Can you ensure that outsourcing will keep that, keep the current dedicated aides in our district? Will they do the extra things our aides are currently doing, like cleaning, decorating bulletin boards, standing in harsh weather to ensure our students get inside safe? We are the front lines with all, with, with all of our students, not just special education. It takes a village to run this district, and we are an intricate part of that village.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Do we have any other?
Hello, so my name is Carrie Missouri Smith. I'm a one-on-one here at the high school. I live at five twenty-nine West Second Street, Earth Row. I do want to say I do appreciate that the board did, you know, withdraw the notion to outsource us. I mean, that is appreciated, but I just still felt like I needed to agree with whatever. Let me start by saying I love working, as I said, with the students. As I believe we all do. That's what I've been doing for fourteen years. I currently am in my third year with my current student. She's autistic and a sophomore. Our relationship was awkward at first in eighth grade. I said, and it took some time, but now I'm able to joke around with her, actually get her to laugh, and even smile. That makes my heart happy. All we want is a fair contract. We were definitely willing, as I said, to compromise. But instead of bargaining with the aides right now, they are choosing to vote on outsourcing. We were given five days, as I said, to prepare, five days to fight for our jobs as district employees. This is not nearly enough time. I would hope that the board would give the aides, parents, and community the time they deserve to have their say. I would hope that the board would take more than five days to make such a big decision that will affect so many. There were so many unknowns with the outsourcing. We don't believe that our jobs will be guaranteed, especially in the same positions that we currently have. Some of us said that, you know, employees have medical benefits for their families. And not knowing what medical benefits for the outsourcing company will be is a problem. We lose our retirement, pension, holiday pay, possible sick days, and most of all, our voice. It's not fair for us to sacrifice everything. We are also being told that our pay rate will not decrease. Again, we are skeptical. Some of the aides may have to leave and seek employment elsewhere to provide for their, their families, even though they don't want to leave their students. Let's not even talk about the fact that the district rarely can ever find subs when we are out. I can't imagine that would get any better with the outsourcing company. In fact, I believe it could get worse, especially with some aides having to leave the district. It scares me to think of all those kids being left with no support. I believe we all treat our students as we treat our own children. We love our jobs. We don't want to be outsourced. Please think of the students and don't outsource the district aides.
Do we have any other public comment? Might help if I use my microphone.
I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm Karen Ackerman, and I live at forty-seven Hess Lane in Douglasville. There were teachers across this country that refused to allow in-person learning to occur because they were afraid of catching COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen impacted each and every one of us, and yes, there was a risk of catching COVID nineteen. But the support staff of Daniel Boone Area School District put the needs of our students first. We attended in-person learning from day one of the school year, and we followed every protocol asked of us to keep our students safe. Now we are asking you to put the needs of the students of the Daniel Boone Area School District first by rejecting the outsourcing of the school aid jobs. And I will say, I am grateful that we were able to have the in-person learning here, because so many districts did not.
Does anybody else want to say anything?
My name is Judy Martino. I live at two two five West Welsh Drive, and I'm currently a learning support aide at the Daniel Boone Primary Center. And I love my job and I love my kids. First of all is, why haven't the aides had a meeting with Dr. Cooper and the board with a discussion on outsourcing us and giving us the information concerning the outsourcing? It's our lives, and we have no information on it, and it clearly seems decided by the board or by the. Secondly, in Dr. Cooper's letter dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-one, he states the rate of the pay for the aides hired by the new company will not be lowered to the current rate per pay, and they will not, and they will be offered a benefit package. Does this mean aides will continue to earn their already scheduled contracted raises as well as their longevity raises, or will the pay be stagnant? Will the benefits include holiday pay, sick days, and personal days? What happens to the accumulated sick and personal days we have left? Though we, Dr. Cooper and the board has, excuse me. Though we, Dr. Cooper and the board have to be aware that the aides were outsourced at the former school district border town with negative results. There were many days without sufficient aides and many days in which the special needs children have different aides instead of the one-on-one consistency they require. So what is the plan if we find out that this outsourcing is a mistake? How will you rectify it? Fourthly, financially, will you post a copy to the public of the cost benefits outsourced analysis you must have completed to arrive to this decision? You rejected the thought of giving the aides a much-needed raise and even went as far as proposing removal of free paid holidays. But I believe that the school district added a few more positions to the school administration where they only needed. But that was okay. We are one of the hardest-working employees of the school district, but we go unnoticed. This outsourcing was a slap on our face. We are the connection between the teachers and the students. The students that have their voice. We are the voice.
And thank you for letting us speak. Looking to see anybody else that's up?
Hi, my name is Debbie Pendleton. I live at four sixty-one Carradine Drive in Collegeville, PA. Dr. Cooper and the school board and district, thank you for letting me speak tonight concerning the issue relating to outsourcing your aides to the Daniel Boone.
I am sorry, did you ask some of the board members if you could speak?
I am a full-time volunteer with my clearances at the primary and the intermediate schools since my grandson started kindergarten.
Yeah, but you're not a resident.
No, I'm not, but I'm a full-time volunteer.
I understand, and you can, you can talk to me if you would like after, after the meeting's over. You can tell me what you'd like to say, but the meeting is only for, if the meeting is really only for our residents to speak. I apologize. I didn't know if that was, maybe I didn't make that clear at the beginning. But that, that's, that's, that's been a longstanding, many, many decade policy.
Okay, I just wanted to.
And you can talk to me after the meeting. I will be here.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing, thank you everyone for being here tonight and making this night. Can I get a motion adjourned? Mr. Scott, can I get a second?
A second.
Mr. Miller, we are adjourned, thank you.
Here you can, we'll go back to my office for the exact session.
That's, that's fine.
I'll come back to my office for the exact session.
Thank you very much. I, I am sorry. No, 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 that's, but, I'm not going to listen to what I have to say concerning outsourcing because I have been in the school since kindergarten. Would you mind sitting down?